If you would take a moment and please join us in the pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're just thankful for the wonderful times you've given us to grow up, raise kids, and just bless this place. We ask you to please be with our workers. They do their daily task. If we go on, we ask you to be with this commission to make the best decisions possible for this city. In Christ's name and pray, amen.
Amen. We would call the meeting to order and let's do a roll call if we would.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardiel.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Brent Couch.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Shannon Miller.
Peyton Parker.
Dale Tyler.
Before we get started, there are a few items on the agenda that have either been removed or tabled for a variety of different reasons, and let me go through those real quick. R 2332 Brentwood Village has been tabled. C 2308, The Wisdom Clock Shop, has been withdrawn. C 2309 Island Barbecue has been tabled as well. The L 2339, The Randall Wabi Flex Space, has been tabled. And the Island Barbecue, 2369, B 2369, has been tabled. And that's it. All the rest of the items are active on the agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from May 2nd.
So motion.
All right. Mr. Cloud, all right? Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Item five on the agenda is our tabled items. We start with B 2353, The Adams Family Properties, and that's presented by The Adams Family.
You need to turn the mic.
Thank you. Hello, it's Elizabeth Adams with Adams Family Properties, address 1641 Butterfield Coach Road, Springdale. Here for a variance of paving.
Okay, what you're asking for is a bill of assurance to pave a driveway and parking spaces to this shed or just a driveway?
It would be the driveway and then the gravelled area in front of the shed to be able to... The vehicle would be parked there to unload load and such.
Okay, do you have any dimensions or any drawings that shows us about the area that you're asking to... For this to maintain? I don't see any drawings. I see the pictures. Do you have any dimensions that goes with that so we know what size we're talking about?
Um, what, maybe? Thirty by fifty? Thirty by fifty?
Okay. You're asking for a two-year bill of assurance?
Sure, yes.
Okay. So if that's approved, we would need a drawing to show the limits so that we don't just keep going further on out of this, and so if the planning commission approves your bill of assurance, we would need a drawing so we know the limits of what area has to be paved within that to your timeframe.
Sure.
Okay?
Are there any comments from members of the audience? To the commission?
This is a call for the vote, and that would be with the stipulation that the bill of assurance, you know, to come to the office and get that filled out once we have a drawing and know what we're looking for. Okay?
For the commission, we need a call for the vote. All right. Thank you, Ray.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Thank you. We have rezoning issues now. This is the Ramsey at Springdale. This is R 2325, L 2337, and W 2315, which involve a change from a planned urban development to a revised, and then a waiver of street improvements. It's presented by Crafton and Tull.
My name is Andres Forero. And do I need to tell my address? Do I need to provide my address?
You can, yes.
Okay. It's 300 North College in Fayetteville.
And you work with Crafton and Tull?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you explain to us what are the amendments to the PUD that you're proposing?
Yes. In this image that is on the screen, we're adding one building. It used to be green space, and it consists of a building for a gym for the facility.
Okay. And you're adding one addition, which is a use unit one, which is citywide public use by right. It would exist anyway, but we're going to add it to the PUD document. They're changing in density in area, bulk area, the total development area is from 13.91 acres to 13.86. The previous from 323 293, or 7.42 acres to 8.24 acres. The open space from 6.49 acres to 5.62 acres, with a total space from 13.9 to 13.86. And I think the difference is because of the right-of-way issues with the street development. They are required to have 400... Previously, they were required to have 429 parking spaces. They provided 441. Now they are providing the 441 to meet that. They're adding this park pavilion replaced with a fitness pavilion. The number of parking stalls proposed to provide a minimum of 1.1 stalls per bedroom. So the total of number of bedrooms increased from 389 to 441, and they have the 441 parking spaces. All provisions of the PUD development remain in place. As we approved with the first one, that includes how the buildings look, all the rest of the layout, everything else stays the same, and the proposed amendment is recommended for approval.
Thanks, Patsy. Are there any comments from members of the audience tonight? Any questions or comments from the commission? For the rezone, we'll need a call for the vote. This is in three phases. We'll handle the rezone, the large scale, and then the waiver. So first, for the rezone, we need a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to City Council on the 27th.
The next part of this is we need a motion, subject to staff comments, and this is from the original PUD to the revised PUD. We need a motion.
Do we have any staff comments on the revised large scale to add this additional building? And I think engineering might be the only one.
Yeah, there's just a few comments here.
Okay.
Please show the pond outlet box detail in the plans. If the owners are responsible for maintaining the pond, please specify that in your PUD development plan. And then for any parking stalls that are adjacent to a five-foot sidewalk, you need to add parking stops or increase the sidewalk width to six foot, and please include a detail of the parking stops and call them out on the site plan. This is related to the waiver that we're about to hear, but improvements are required on Bob Mills Road, and engineering recommends payment in lieu of those improvements. And then it looks like we were missing some of the detail sheets from the plan set.
Thank you.
Ron, do you have any planning comments?
Just standard comments, and then the rezone and the waiver of street improvements.
Okay.
We need a motion for that, subject to staff comments for the revision in the PUD.
A motion for staff comment.
Thank you, Mark. We have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
And then the last part of this, the request for a waiver of the street improvements on Bob Mills Road. We would need a motion to that effect, and we will forward that on to the City Council.
Okay, now, the engineering staff is recommending payment in lieu of improvement. So y'all have to determine whether you want to recommend, grant the waiver, or to do, recommend payment in lieu of.
I'll recommend the waiver or payment in lieu of.
Okay.
And that's your motion, right?
Yes.
We need a...
I'll second.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Staff will prepare the resolution to the council at the same time on the 27th.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Continuing with the rezoning, we have The Anders Family on Elm Springs Road from an A1 to a C5, along with large scale, and then a variance request. That's presented by SM Engineering.
Hi, I'm Sam Malinowski with SM Engineering, and happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments more? The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourages development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail service, and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be serviced, and more extensive outdoor display of material will be expected.
There any comments at all from members of the audience? The first part of this requires a call for the vote, and this is from the rezone from an A1 to a C5, so I'd entertain a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thanks, Mark.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
The second part of this for large scale is a motion that's been subject to the staff comments, and we would need a motion for that.
Okay, we need staff comments first.
Oops, sorry. Staff comments? Sorry up there.
The ordinance... The city will prepare the ordinance for the rezoning to go to council on the 27th.
Okay. For staff comments, in addition to standard comments, an informal plat needs to be submitted, and the additional right-of-way can be dedicated via that plat. The EV parking spots that are identified, add a note indicating future spots or remove from the plans. The planning department will review the screening and equipment detail when they're ready to be installed. For commercial design standards, foundation landscaping, perimeter landscaping, and landscaping around the dumpster area is required, in which a variance has been requested for all Engineering comments, please show curb and paving dimensions, show turning radius at entrances and exits, and the rest are standard comments.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion at this time for a large scale.
You got to ask for comments first. Comments first, yeah.
Are there any comments from members of the audience? Sorry. All right. Now we'd entertain a motion for large scale.
I have a question about the variance. Can we get some more specifics of what you're asking to change?
Mainly the perimeter, the foundation plantings on the south, just because it's in down in the truck dock area, and then the foundation plantings also on the backside, because that's, we got room for a future expansion back there, and it's just, and it's completely screened from the neighbors on the west. And another thing, landscaping around the trash enclosure is actually down in the truck well, so it's kind of below grade anyway, and they will install a gate on it so you won't be able to see it at all. And then for the perimeter landscaping on the south and the east, just because to the south is going to be future development at some point in time, and on the east, it's just between us and MacAdoos.
Have you put additional landscaping in that would compensate for that along the places where you have it, so that we have the same amount of landscaping, it's just in different locations?
Yeah, we could do that.
You can do that, or you have done that?
We have not, I have not done that, no. We've met your requirements as far as the screening in on the west and along the street, but I haven't added any additional landscaping to make up for that.
Okay, you have not?
No.
But can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So that was what you were going to ask, right, Mark? Sorry.
No, you're fine.
So you're saying that you will have revised the landscaping plan to show additional landscaping on the site that would equal to what would be required to do the additional landscaping along the perimeter and the foundational landscape?
Yes, we, yeah. We tried to fit it in there.
Ray, got that?
We're still on the motion.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Entertain a motion for large scale for Aldi Grocery.
A motion is submitted, Steph. I have a question.
You need to go up to the...
About to rezoning.
We already passed that now.
We need to do, I knew the variance first.
Oh, I thought we were doing the motion first.
I noticed on the plan for the rezoning, there's a, the store for Aldi's actually takes up a portion of the lot for rezoning, not in the back part. They said that was for future rezoning, I mean, future development. How, is this the time to discuss the variances that they're asking for?
Yeah.
With some concerns to me?
Yes.
Like the screening variances?
Yes.
Yes. Of course, I looked at the plan, and I've seen the variances, and I've read the rules and stuff, and all in all, it's kind of hard to understand. But I noticed they have a broken fence, and by the way, my name's Jack Clark. I live at 5085 Elm Springs Road, just west of the proposed development. But what I wonder, they've got a broken fence there, and I think it needs to be a solid fence, for one reason, for a couple reasons. I also think that it needs to be a taller fence in the front to block my house from people sitting in the parking lot, basically. The broken fence, I'm mainly concerned about crime and people slipping in my back door. I'm the only residence on that part of the road. The potential for home invasion or crime in that area, somebody slipping in the back and burglarizing my place, would be high with a broken fence. People could park right in the parking lot and just come over and help themselves. That's my concerns, really.
Now, this shows a eight-foot-tall cedar fence that's shadowed box, which means there's one plank on one side, one on the other side. What's the five-foot gap for? Can you explain that to us?
Honestly, I was in the requirements. I have no problem making it solid.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody tell me what the five-foot gap's supposed to be in the...
I thought I read it in the requirements that they're asking.
Okay, I don't remember it being there.
Maybe I made that up.
Somebody got to tell me if it's different, because I don't remember a five-foot gap.
I think that was one of the options.
Okay.
There was a discussion of landscape pockets, but if they could be solid.
Yeah, I think that creates a, I'm like you, that creates an area that makes a concern. Usually, we do those pockets when they're along a street, and to keep from having a long fence without any breaks in it, you put a pocket in it and do that rather than doing it, unless you were doing a pocket in that it would have fence around it and you would do landscaping inside that pocket.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not what you intended.
We prefer a solid.
Okay, so you'll make that change on there, that that five-foot gap will no longer exist?
And I'd like to see it at least tall at the front part. I don't know...
It's eight foot on, all the way up to the...
Eight foot's great.
Yeah, it's eight foot, that's what he's required to do, all the way down to within the edge of the parking lot on the north side. It will be eight foot tall all the way down through there with trees.
How much land is this development taking up that they're doing right now? I know it's about a three-and-a-half acre tract they're rezoning.
Okay, somebody needs to calculate.
2.6.
Yeah, 2.6 is our, yeah, it's our site. A little less than that by the time we give you back the right.
Okay, so should I be concerned about any future development in the back as far as fencing, or?
Well, they'll have to do the same thing.
Yeah.
The screening requirement between residential and commercial is, it doesn't matter when, who's doing what development, or when it happens, it has to go in as part of that.
Great.
You'll have the same thing going on to the next one. Unless you rezone your property commercial, then there's no screening requirement when it's commercial to commercial.
Great, thank you. If you have any problems, holler.
Are there any other comments?
We really need to take the variances first.
All right. We've got B 2368, we've got the variances there. This would require a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
All right. Thank you.
Are we going to take these all together?
Yes.
Yeah, if that's okay. Yep.
I think we're basically in that way.
Take them all together.
Okay.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
And now do the large scale?
Yeah, now we need the motion, subject to staff comments, with the gap being taken out of, that will be added to the staff comments, okay?
Correct, correct. This is L 2341. We need a motion for, subject to all the staff comments that have been made and the agreement on the fencing.
So motion.
Thank you, Mark. Need a second?
Got it.
Thank you, Howard.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Thank you. This is continuing with the rezonings. This is Compassion Ministries on West End Street from an SF2 to a P1. This is presented by Jennifer Samuel.
Yes, my name's Jennifer Samuel with Compassion House, DBA of Compassion Ministries. And so what we are, we purchased this home in order to have a transitional housing. It will house up to four young women, and then it has a set of house parents that will be on-site overnight and 24/7.
They're asking to rezon the property from SF2 to P1 as an institutional facility, as a nonprofit organization that's operating at that location?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The comprehensive land use plan indicates residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourages development of office and professional uses that provide a transition between residential areas and more intense uses with reasonable building height limitations, inadequate buffering, and landscaping to ensure compatibility. And you're not altering the structure that's there at all?
No, we're not even putting signage, we don't want signage out on this house even.
Okay.
So it is...
You couldn't put, you'd be restricted on what kind of signs you could put.
Right. So we're good with that.
Are there any comments from the audience?
I see, is there, do they do additional use and leave it as SF2, or is it needed to have a P1 for them to do with the private?
It really needs to go to P1. Really does. It just provides them with more security as a P1. We've been around and around trying to figure out what's the best way to go for that, and decided that if E1 really provides them the security that they need at that location.
This would require a call for the vote, or any questions or comments from members of the commission?
Call for the vote.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
And now do the large scale?
Yeah, now we need the motion, subject to staff comments, with the gap being taken out of, that will be added to the staff comments, okay?
Correct, correct. This is L 2341. We need a motion for, subject to all the staff comments that have been made and the agreement on the fencing.
So motion.
Thank you, Mark. Need a second?
Got it.
Thank you, Howard.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
The next item on the agenda is 2330. This is Rouse Holdings on Sunset Avenue from a C2 to a C5, and that's presented by Sash Goyle.
I'm Joe Rouse, CEO for Rouse Holdings, and Sash is ill and not going to be here. I have two representatives possible here, Bob Downham and Victor. Victor is in the house. Yes, please. Victor will speak to this point.
Okay, hold on just a second. We have to know for sure that you're authorized, you're representing Rouse Holdings.
I am Dr. Rouse.
Okay. And we have his documentation for LLC?
I'm pretty sure we do.
Okay, we're good. I have to make sure we have the right person representing him.
Thank you.
Good evening, Victor Davis, on behalf of Sash Goyle, looking for rezoning from C2 to C5.
Okay. The comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for this location. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, encourages development of regional commercial
areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale retail service and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served and more extensive outdoor display materials will be expected.
Are there any questions from the audience? All right, this would require a call from the vote, uh, to the commission. Thank you.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next rezone is Armor Insurance. This is on Old Wire Road. They're looking to go from an A1 to a C2, and that's presented by Matt Luce.
Thank you, uh, Matt Luce with Olson Engineers, here to represent for any questions you may have.
Um, the comprehensive land use plan indicates lot industrial warehouse for this area. The resoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan is not recommended for approval. Uh,
what do y'all have in mind for this piece of property?
Uh, it's uncertain at this time. It's basically keeping up with, uh, the, the rezone, or the zonings in the area. There's C2 just to the north, uh, A1 to the west, um, but keeping in with the commercial district there.
Okay. Everything else in that area is industrial. I think that's the concern we have, is just creating that little piece. Uh, it's really up to you guys.
Any? Here's the land to the north, and northeast is C2. Am I seeing that right, or am I missing that?
Yeah, it's on the other side of the drive. There's a drive on, on the other side, June South that's in there. Those areas were in Bethel Heights that came into the city, and we just transferred their rezoning. Just to the north of this is the food bank.
Right.
Uh-huh. And it's zone C2.
Food bank is C2?
Yeah, and I, you know, it's actually a warehouse, so it's kind of a non-conforming use in that area too. So, this is a real interesting area, cause 265 kinda changed the whole atmosphere out there too. It didn't used to go down through there, so.
Is there, is there an issue making the C2, and then come back later to do C6 if it makes sense, if A1, I mean, you saw what I'm saying, man, I don't know, I don't, I don't see a reason not to grant them, cause they're adjacent property. I see your point too, that there's C6 and I2 to the east of 265 to the south.
Can somebody pull up the zoning ordinance and see if there's a minimum lot size in C6?
Huh.
I think there's a minimum lot size in C5, but I don't remember if there's a, and my phone is not cooperating. Well, maybe it is better, it wasn't a minute ago. Or their iPad, somebody get their iPad that they can pull the zoning ordinance up. I've had trouble with. Does it say right here? It probably, no. I need one that has C5 that says, or. Okay, so we're good. It can go to C2 without having to have a minimum size, if that's what we wanna do.
Any questions at all from members of the audience? Commissioner Mark, are you, are you inclined to make a motion? All right, all right, call for the vote.
Okay, so you're calling for the vote to approve the.
Correct, to make it A1 to C2.
A1 to C2, that's the question on the table.
Yep.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next on the rezones, Harold Floyd and Billy Sue Harmon on Oak Grove Road from A1 to C2, that's presented by Blue and Associates. Who don't appear to be here at this time. We'll come back to that one maybe later in the agenda.
Still fishing your head in schedule. Don't worry about it.
Okay, we'll come back to that. We now head over preliminary plaits and.
They came and found me. Apologies, George came with Blue and Associates. Uh, we are looking at rezoning this property and the one below it, the 815-29801-015, both of those pieces to C2. Um, yeah, as you can see on the conceptual site plan, it was, uh, they're looking at doing a warehouse slash retail center, um, or storage slash retail center, and then a, an office building. The 5280 would be an office building, but I don't think that necessarily matters for the rezoning. Um, but that is the intent. Uh, we are adjacent to commercial property. We're gonna get the sewer from the, uh, from the Walmart, uh, piece. We're working on getting an easement for this piece, so we will have sewer. There is existing water on the property, so we will have access to water as well. So, um, on intensive purposes, it seemed like it was a good fit for the area. Um, we figured that during the large scale, there will probably be plenty of screening that will have to happen to kind of screen all the residential properties around from it, but as you can tell right now, we are, uh, dealing with a hundred-foot utility easement that kinda goes down the middle with a power line, so we're gonna be limited to exactly how much we can develop on this property, since a good portion of the property will be, uh, encumbered by that utility easement. But if you have any questions, I am here for you.
Okay.
What about the property, the tract to the north? What's, what's, why C2 on that one? Cause it backs up to residential.
Same ownership. They wanted to try and rezone both pieces of property at the same time. Um, I don't know that necessarily, their development is only for the piece down below, but since they were trying to create, or buy both pieces of property, they're, they wanted to try and rezone both pieces while they were at it.
Okay, and then the commercial use to the north of this is one that was there when it's annexed into the city, so it's a non-conforming use. Yeah, and it's O1, yeah. I- is there a possibility of rezoning the north? Well, let me do comments first.
The adopted land use plan shows low density residential in the area for this area. The resoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan is not recommended for approval. Um, it's possible that the property to the south could, could be, uh, C2, and maybe the property to the tract to the north being O1 to continue that buffering to the residential to the west, and, and it's O1 to the north. Is that a possibility?
Um, I mean, if that is what would be allowed to give them, because that would also give them kind of office structures, and that seems like a pretty good, um, intermediate between commercial and, uh, residential, so I, I know their preferences to go C2, but O1 for me, in my mind, would probably be one of those acceptable uses.
Okay. You're making a decision on behalf of your applicant. Do you wanna do that tonight, or you wanna table and ask them about it before we, we go that route?
Can we break up the two parcels and do the C2 for the bottom one, and then table the upper piece for later?
No, we won't do that, cause the request was for the two tracks, so you can't, you can't break that up now, but you can table it and come back and ask to downgrade the C2 on the north side to an O1, if you wanna do that, or if you're comfortable with doing it yourself, you can do that. I'm just saying, you're representing the property owner tonight because you're authorized to represent.
No, I understand that, and, uh, the property owners, the property owner is here, but the buyer, who is actually the one that is the developer, um, is not at the meeting currently, but I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, I'm getting the feeling that C2 is not gonna happen on that upper piece.
I can tell you that staff is not recommending C2 for the upper piece.
Okay. Then I will just, uh, go ahead and make the O1, and if they wanna come back and try C2, uh, separate rezoning, then we'll just do that, but for tonight, let's go ahead and do the C2 with the O1.
Okay, so the O, O1 would be, can you give me the track number for the one on, well, we'll go back and fix it. It, it's the track number that's highlighted here would be the O1, correct?
815-29.
And the track to the south would be the C2.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so you're amending your request to that right now?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be what, the call for the vote, now we're gonna still ask if there's any comments.
Any comments from the, uh, members of the audience? At the commission, this becomes an, uh, request for an A1 to an O1.
I've got, I've got one comment, sir.
We got one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm the Harmon's real estate agent, and, uh, basically, the properties around it, the, there's currently, uh, listing just to the south, um, that is, uh, owned by the Geels Painting Family. Y'all probably know, heard of them, but that property's on the market for about $11 million, and they will request a C2 zoning, and that property does adjoin our property to the, uh, north.
Well, we haven't seen that request yet.
Oh, I know. I know, but it's coming, so that's, just to give you all some information about what's happening in that area, as you know, it is growing quite rapidly, uh, for commercial use, so, um, that is an additional piece of information that would be helpful to you all to have.
So you're opposing the going to the northern tract, O1?
I'm gonna let Mr., the gentleman that represents Blue, uh, come in on that, so.
Okay, he's already said yes.
Yeah, that's fine, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as we're all on the same page.
Yeah. I'm just letting you know that there's additional properties coming on that eventually will be rezoned, that adjoin this piece of property.
That could be tomorrow, or it could be two years from now.
I understand that.
We're talking about tonight.
I understand that. Thank you.
What? No, we're actually voting on two tracks, cause it, the request was for two tracks, right?
Yep.
Correct.
So, is staff in favor of the C2 for the southern tract and O1 for the northern tract?
That's correct.
Is that what you're telling me?
We were trying to get a buffer on the north to those residents that are to the west and to the north, yeah.
You okay, Patsy, with that one?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. This requires a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thanks, Dale.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes. That passes 6-1.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and, and we need a revised legal description. Where did George go? Oh, okay, sorry. I, I have a, a vision problem, so I, I lose people sometimes.
I was hiding behind Rick, so I understand.
We, we will have to have a revised legal description to go on the ordinance itself, and it'll go to council on the 27th.
One description for the bottom piece, one description for the top?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thanks. Section 8 on the agenda is, uh, preliminary plaits and replats and final plaits, and, uh, the first one up is, uh, 2307, the Shaver Edition on McRae, and this is presented by Alan J. Young. Who may not be here. We'll come back to that.
He's coming.
All right.
Sorry about that, I was outside in the overflow.
That's all right.
Um, this project is a preliminary plat for a 10-lot commercial subdivision. This actually came through in December. Uh, at that time, it included an additional piece of property on the east and south. Um, that strip has been removed, and we are resubmitting it with the adjusted lots.
We got staff comments?
Are there staff comments here?
Planning staff has only standard comments at this time.
Engineering comments show minimum finished floor elevations for lots adjacent to the pond. And we had some questions about what part of Lot 10 is detained by the pond, um, and I discussed that with the consultant. Some of these comments are, are related to the construction drawings that will come later, so I'm gonna skip those for now. Um, show all street improvements. Street improvements are required on McRae and Shaver, including curb, gutters, sidewalks, storm drainage, and streetlights as needed, um, and they have intend, they have let me know that they are intending to apply for a waiver for that. Um, please show details for all improvements, and show dimensions for all improvements. The rest are standard comments.
Hey, I wanna ask a question. Is the developer willing to put up payment in lieu of improvements for, uh, McRae Street improvements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We can save a little bit of time, if we can get that worked out on the front end.
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
So, so my mom's house is right across the street.
Could you, uh, give us your name, please, and address?
Timster, 3550 McRae is the, uh, lot that's right across the street from this new development. There's no sewer on that street, so I was wondering if they put that in, is the sewer gonna be able to come through McRae to the other side of the street, or are they gonna stop it where it's at?
I don't know that they're bringing sewer to McRae Street. Are you, what, tell us how you're gonna access sewer to this property?
Uh, yeah, our plan is to put in a lift station on this property and sewer it to the north of Shaver. We did evaluate, but, uh, the next adjacent sewer on McRae is an extended distance away, and this was the more feasible option.
So, uh, so you put in a lift station, it's gonna be pumped to the south?
Yes, uh, yes, ma'am. It'll be pumped to the south to Shaver Street.
And there will be no extension of the sewer along McRae with this project?
No, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, well, I've got another question. So, a lot next door to this is commercial.
Okay.
Now that, all across the street's getting ready to be commercial, so would I be able to make that lot more commercial?
Well, the record owner of the property has to be the applicant to request it to be rezoned.
Okay, well, my mom pa- my mom passed away on May 1st, so my sister is the trust holder, so she need to do something.
She would have, whoever has, once the trust is, you have to send us a tr- trust document, whoever is authorized to sign, on behalf of the trust can be the applicant. But it has to be the record property owner to apply for a rezon.
And there's never gonna be any sewer put there.
Well, I didn't say there's never gonna be any sewer put in there. I'm just saying it's not being done with this project.
Well, I called them, and they said that they didn't know when they were gonna do it, whether, so I'm just wondering, in the middle of Springdale, there's no sewer?
Well, I can tell you, that's not the only place in the middle of Springdale, there's not any sewer, but, yeah.
Well, it's on both sides.
Yeah, it, it has been extended in areas as development has occurred, uh, but it's not, it's not something, I don't know, it, it's not on their master plan that it's being extended, if that's what they told you, for that area.
I mean, if I had to pay to get to it, I mean, is that even a possibility, or?
There's always that possibility, if you work with Springdale Water, to see if you could afford to get it there. May not extensions are very expensive, so I would suggest you talk to them about it, and that's something that Springdale Water Sewer handles. We don't handle that part, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Any comments from the audience anymore? This would be a motion from the commission, um, subject to all the staff comments that have been made.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thanks, Mark. Need a second? Thanks, Ray.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes. That motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Um, RP 2309, this is Devers Edition on West Allen Avenue, uh, lots 1 through 4 and Block 2, lots 1 through 5. This is presented by ESI, and this is a, uh, a replat.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Brandon Rush with ESI. Um, this is a replat in a Devers Edition, which I think was about 100 years ago. Um, so you can see, the current use does not line up with the old-school lot layout in there. Um, this is just kinda cleaning it up. Um, it's all owned by the school district, so happy to answer any questions.
So is it all becoming one lot?
Um, the building on the west side is gonna be on a lot.
Okay.
Um, and then everything else there, the treehouse pantry and the gravel area will be another lot.
Okay, and all the easements and all of those that are on there stay just exactly as they were?
Yes.
And as you can see at the next drawing, this one was a hand-drawn one, and it's probably really been here a long time. Yeah, okay. Have staff comments on this one?
Planning staff has only standard comments.
And engineering comments?
Yep. Any comments from the audience?
Yep, okay.
We need a motion from the commissioners, subject to, uh, with all the staff comments that have been made. Thanks, Chris. We need a second. All right, thanks, Mark.
Hussein?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance has to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
Next item, we've got a replat, uh, 2310. This is Worth Lane Commercial Park on East Robinson Avenue, lots 3A to 3E, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Brandon Rush, ESI. Um, this is, um, a commercial subdivision that was created in the 2000s. It's now all under one owner, and, um, is basically being turned back into a single property.
Okay, staff comments?
Planning staff has only standard comments.
Would there be any comments from the audience?
Engineering, have any comments?
No.
Just standard ones?
Thanks. For the commission, this would be a motion, uh, subject to staff comments.
So motion.
Thanks, Mark. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein?
Again, if you want this to go to council next week, it needs, uh, ordinance to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
The last of the issues on the plat says, is our final plat for Hilton Place, uh, pay, Phase 3, is out, uh, on the east side, Don Tyson, uh, on the west side of Hilton Road, presented again by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Jason Apple with ESI, uh, requesting final plat approval, uh, for Hilton, but Hilton Place, Phase 3. Answer any questions?
Water and sewer and street are all to the level, they're supposed to be all the way out to Hilton Road?
Engineering only has standard comments on this one.
Okay.
Any additional staff comments? No? No? This would be a motion subject to staff comments, uh, that comes to the commission.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thanks, Dale. Thanks, Dale.
Second.
Thanks, Mark.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Ordinance needs to be in the office by tomorrow at noon if you want on council next week.
Thank you.
Moves on to item 9 on the agenda. This is large-scale developments. The first one up is 2316, which is Clear Creek Apartments out on Gene George Boulevard. They're also asking for a variance, which is 2371, actually several variances. So this is presented by ESI.
Preston Locker with ESI. This is Clear Creek Developments. I hope all of you got a chance to look at the proposal packet sent from the developer. This is a luxury apartment complex in the overlay district. Just to clear the air, every building has stone now. We received all the comments from staff. We, we agree with the comments. We'll continue working with those to amend those comments, and I'll be happy to discuss anything further or answer any questions.
Thanks.
Do we have staff comments? I know engineering's got some comments. Who wants to go first?
All right, engineering comments. Typical section for minor collector on page 3 does not match the section on page 4. Please revise. And the future truck route for the minor collector that was noted in the responses, I could not find that in the submission. And I had some questions about the signage and striping plan, and I've got some images here that y'all can't see, but we're requesting a couple revisions to that. And then, the last one is regarding the wetlands that are on the property. So based on a preliminary delineation from FTN, it appears that there are wetlands on this site and that the development may be encroaching on those wetlands. The Corps of Engineers regulates wetlands, so we just need either a jurisdictional determination that says, no, these wetlands are not jurisdictional, or we need a core permit to be submitted prior to construction.
Planning comments. We have one garage that was split into two garages. Square footage needs to be updated. ESI said that they will get that updated. We have several walk paths that are not lighted, with at least one foot candle in all parking pedestrian areas. Their comments state that that will be corrected. We have an area where there are crosswalks that need to be placed on the plans, where it goes from sidewalk across the parking lot to another sidewalk in multiple areas throughout Common open space shall contain at least three of the following features: seasonal planting areas, adequate large trees, adequate seating, pedestrian-scale lighting, gazebos or other decorative shelters, adequate play structures for children, onsite community recreation amenities. There are several areas that did not have that. I have one sheet that shows some of that has been corrected, but I don't have sheets to show all of it has been corrected. Site layout, buildings should be clustered to create neighborhoods. Buildings shall be organized around common open space to enclose common open space if The, we have multiple amenities on the project, but they're all clustered in one area. There are several buildings that are away from the amenities. There has been a dog park added to the middle of a parking lot between two buildings to get those to where they are near one, but I still don't feel like we have the clustering of the buildings. They have stated they're gonna have visitor parking designated. Engineer says that that will be corrected on the signage plan. Lighting plan calculations that we have do not show areas, has areas where there's no lighting, foot candles given. Also, there's areas where the building light bleeds over into the parking lot lighting. They've stated that that is accounted for in the lighting plan. I just need to see if that's been updated, or if there's any updates need to be done to that. But we will need an update to the lighting plan because the carports, the package that they have, originally, we didn't think it had lights. The package that they have has lights that come with it, so we'll need to make sure the lighting plan is updated for that. Let's see if we can remove that. For the SEPTED, Section D, it talks about having eyes on. We have an area, it says, this is found in the area around the clubhouse, but the remainder of the site does not have any additional eyes other than just windows that have views. Needs to be something placed there, benches and common spaces to draw people out of their buildings. We do have one bench placed in each of the common open areas. There is an area where multiple drives come together with the boulevard. The boulevard is one-way on each side, but you've got four other areas. I don't know if you can see right there where the red is. You have four other areas of two-way traffic that will meet in that intersection also with only, I think, two stop signs. We'd like for that to be revisited. They've stated that they will move the, move one of the stop signs, as was in the engineering comments. We do not have anything showing that stone has been added to the carport, but they have stated that it will be there. Existing vegetation, which will be in the area of the wetlands, says that they're saving five trees in the wetlands area and that be removing some of the invasive species, underbrush, and any species with thorns and burrs. How will this be done to protect the wetlands areas? Which trees are being protected? How will the trees be protected? And then, also asked to include a preservation/restoration proposal. And I, sorry, I didn't write down their comments to that, but we still have some discussions over that because there are quite a few trees in that area. I just need to make sure we're preserving the correct trees. Sidewalk landscaping, landscaping and site amenities along pedestrian walkways are encouraged but not restricted to a fixed percentage of landscaping. Many of the walkways do not have landscaping. Their statement is, as code states, sidewalk landscaping is only encouraged, however, despite not being required, we've provided some shade trees along most pedestrian pathways. For entrance landscaping, we weren't able to read what type of landscaping was there. They've stated that they will get that cleared up. Tree planning detail does not match the landscape notes. They've stated that that will be updated. Update landscape notes and tree planning detail to match. They've stated that that will also be updated. And then, last but not least, we've asked that they get in contact with Springdale Police Department for a gated community to ensure that the police department is satisfied with the way that they can get into the development. They've stated that they will give a specific code to the police department, but as of this time, they have not contacted the police department.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. You have submitted a letter and estimate for fee in lieu of a payment for the new road that's been submitted? That's what you're asking for?
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct.
So, until that road is built, then the access from those two buildings on the east side will just be a little bit of an offset in a driveway?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Until that minor collector going through the east side of the property is extended and continued out, all the residents will just travel through the development to get to their, those east apartments.
Okay, so if this is a gated community, that will there be a gate on east side of that access?
That will be determined once the, the minor collector is actually extended further.
Okay, but until that time, is that the gated area on the east side so that you can't get, you can't come around? I guess you have to get out on the highway to get out any other place, and so that, it doesn't have to have a second gate on the backside as well?
Correct, yes. As, as of now, with that road not being fully constructed, they will either enter off of Gene George or Members Lane.
Okay, and so when that occurs, those two buildings are then isolated from the rest of the complex because there'll be a major collector they have to go across?
So if, if gated entrances are added to those two areas, there will be pedestrian pathways, and we also added the pedestrian crosswalks that will tie the east side of the development with the west side of the, of the development.
Okay, so does, if those two buildings on that side are by themselves, what percentage of that area is open space?
It would just be that dog park area.
So once that road goes through, they're kinda isolated in that, they can't get to the other areas without crossing a major collector?
At this time, yes.
Okay. Let's talk about the wetland areas. Ben, can you give us a little bit more, if they have to get a 404 permit? What does that mean is gonna happen with this? So we kinda know where we are with this? Because we're looking to approve this with that having still to be done, correct?
Well, right. I think they'll need a 404 permit. It's a question of whether or not this is a jurisdictional waters or not. The Supreme Court a couple weeks ago passed a, did a court case, and so it is kind of, things about wetlands are a little in arms right now. They, what they said was that it had to be connected to the stream on the surface. It couldn't be connected via the, through the ground, which used to be the case. It'll be up for the Army Corps of Engineers to decide that. They'll determine what is, what is waters of the US and whether this wetland is contiguous to it or not. So, you know, the building that's shown in there, they probably can build it there, but they may have to buy wetland credits to do that. So, kind of an example, we built the detention fund on the airport property. We had .34 acres of wetlands. We had to buy 2.77 credits to offset that damage, and that was $20,000 of credit. So, just kinda give you a ballpark idea of what, what we had won recently.
And then, if those wetland credits, if those credits are bought, nothing can be done in that area that's in that designated area as a wetland, or that allows you to clean it off and make it something else?
That allows you to turn it into real land and build something on it. You're basically paying someone else to retain their wetland so that you can destroy this one, or at least a portion of it.
Okay.
That's how that works.
Preston, when you got that report back from FTN, did you look at what their outline would have done to this and overlaid this, and you agree or don't agree that it could go into those buildings?
So that is just a preliminary analysis. They, they did not conduct a full-fledged report. We will be following up with them for a full-fledged report to get the actual delineation. If their actual delineation encroaches on any of our development, we will be seeking that 404 national permit in order to remediate that wetland area.
Okay, do we have any, any idea what timeframe it takes to get that kinda stuff done?
So, from my estimates, it's 30 to 90 days approximately.
You can deal with a core in 30 to 90 days?
For a national permit, yes. An individual permit is years, but the national permit, because just based off of rough calculations, we would only, if we did disturb anything, it would be less than half an acre, and that is the threshold between national permit and individual permit.
Okay, Ben, I have one question for you. If this is approved tonight, would they be granted any grading permits or allowed to start any work on this until that's taken care of?
They couldn't allow any grading in that area. It's supposed to be a normal.
Okay. So if you can do it in 60 to 90 days, we could have all this answered and know the actual limits of that if there is a designated wetland in 60 to 90 days?
The 60 to 90 days would be the, the permit process. We could probably have a more accurate delineation a lot sooner than that to just know the extent of any encroachment. And then, if we are encroaching, then we would seek the permit.
Okay, I have to ask a question. Why, if you can do it in that timeframe, why has that not been done?
Oh, so, the, at first, we, we didn't think that the encroachment was as extensive as that shows. That's, that's just a PDF overlay, and so that's, that's why we are reaching out to FTN to get a more formal analysis of this area.
Did you have that more formal analysis when you submitted this, or did you get it after it was submitted the first time?
After.
Because we've had this, what, since, when was your first submission?
So the, the wetland, the wetland area discrepancies just came up with this recent planning comment, or this recent planning review.
Well, but you submitted on your re-submission as a wetland.
Correct, yes.
It wasn't on the first one that you identified it as a wetland, but on your second submission, you identified it as a wetland.
Yes, so we-
That's when you were asked to do the, the study.
No, so we, we had the wetland designation on there. Our just, our wetland area did not match up with the FTN, and so that's why we are requesting a more official delineation of the wetland area.
So I guess the question is, are you ready to move forward with it till we know what that determination is? And, you know, we can move it forward with that being worked out, with the understanding that if something has to be altered, they'll have to come back anyway and alter it? So we can move forward with it like that, assuming all the rest of this is, has been addressed, and they understand they can't move forward till we get that worked out? A large scale's only good for a year. You remember that?
We, we understand that, and we, we understand that there is potential, that there is encroachment, which is why we would be doing the 404. But if we were granted approval, we would not touch that area until either the court case ruled that that area is no longer jurisdictional, or we receive the permit.
Okay, but what we're saying is, you don't do anything on this site till we get that taken care of. Not just a grading permit for not just that area, because it could affect the way you lay up the entire complex.
So, so grading, grading could occur on that site without disturbing that area prior to either it being determined not jurisdictional or-
You're assuming it could. I'm saying that I don't know that that's what we're talking about, giving you the ability to do that till we get that taken care of, because it could affect a bigger area. That's a decision that the planning commission has to make.
Typically, engineering will not issue a grading permit until all state and federal permits have been received.
So what, what we're saying is, you don't get a grading permit to move any dirt on this site until that's taken care of, okay? We understand that?
Yeah, we're, we're fine with that.
Okay. Then we have the issue with the, I mean, y'all are pretty well good with everything else that's on here?
Yes, so I, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the revised open space that was submit, or submitted, but we, we did remove a lot of the areas that were in question due to safety reason, as Ron was explaining, and we still are above the threshold for the required common open space, removing all those areas of concern from planning staff.
Those long, narrow areas along the major collector being some of those, for sure?
Yes, those got removed.
Which makes even less common area for those two buildings on the east side.
Understood, but they still will have full access to the entire development.
For the time being?
Yes.
Till the road opens up? Okay. The issue about the gates, are y'all moving forward with that, and when can we expect something to be worked with the police department?
So the, the gate layout, I mean, the, the components of the gates have not fully been selected yet, and as soon as those are, and, you know, what requirements needed, are needed for the police department, we will, we are more than happy to work with the police department to ensure that they have continuous access to enter this facility.
Fire department as well?
Uh, yes, so the, the-
You want the firemen to get in there and be in the analysis?
The fire department actually sent us requirements for their gated community, and those are included in the plans. We just weren't aware that, we, we didn't receive any police department requirements, and so that's why we were going to reach out and, you know, as, as Ron said, give them a individual code that any police officer could use to get into the facility.
Okay, the other thing to note is, the Southwest Overlay District requires a common signage plan, and you didn't submit one of those yet.
So as, as we discussed in our meeting, we were going with the monument plan, or the monument sign, not, not the monument sign, the, the, I believe it was the, the wall sign in lieu of-
Okay, it's not just those signs, it's every sign on every building, every parking lot light, that sign.
Okay, yes.
The whole nine yards of every sign that goes into that has to be on a common signage plan. Stop signs, all those kinda things, too.
Okay, yes, that, that will be included, yes.
Common signage plan, okay, that, because we don't have that yet. I don't think I have anything else yet.
Any additional staff comments? Any comments from the audience?
Can you elaborate on the two A and B, the two variances you're asking for?
So the, the first variance is, is for the overall length of building. I believe that's Building 13. Yes, that one. It's, I believe, 40 feet over the allowed length for a residential building in the multifamily district, and we're just trying to maximize the amount of space that we have. The other variance is for Building 10, which is along the minor collector, and that is from the multifamily design standards stating that three-story buildings are required a 50-foot offset from the minor collector, whereas, because of the, the limited space on this development, we're only able to provide the, the required 30 just for the, the minor collector.
So your hardship is what?
The, just the, the limited amount of space, you know, not encroaching onto the, the wetland area. And just to note, only a small portion of the building will be three stories. I believe the, the north side of the building is one-story, and the south side of the building is only two-story, so it would be- So it would be just a small section in the middle. That would be the, the three stories.
And what's the width of that small section in the middle?
Um, I believe is approximately a hundred feet.
Okay. And then the other building that's forty feet too long, you'd have more green space if you put a standard sized building in there.
I, I understand that, but the developer's wanting to, um, maximize the, the amount of units that he is able to provide.
Is that building, the long one, is that the one just south of the detention area?
Yes, that's correct.
You could add more green space for those two across the street if the building was the normal size.
But we are, we are required, or we are meeting the, the green space and common space requirements.
Did I hear you say you're not gonna put a monument sign at the entrance?
Uh, so-
They're doing it on the walls.
So it's, yeah, it's, uh, they have elaborate gated entrances and the, the signage will be on the elaborate gated, um, entrances. I, I believe we included, um, um, plans and elevations of those signs. And it's, it's essentially stone walls leading to the gates and the, the name of the apartment complex will be on those stone walls leading to the gates.
Those will have to be evaluated with the common science plan.
Any other questions? And Preston, you are, you're cognizant of all the comments that came from Ron and all that?
Yes, and we, we will continue working until, um, you know, all staff members are, um, happy with the plans.
Again, I'm gonna say, if we approve this tonight, it is subject to having the wetlands taken care of. And there will be no grading permits allowed until that's worked out. That's three times down. Got it?
Understood. Uh, I believe it right now currently is two phases. Yes, the red line is the, the second phase, yes.
Any other, uh, questions? Any other questions from, okay. We would need a, uh, first of all, a motion.
No, we need to call for the vote on the variances first.
Call for the vote on the variances. Okay, let's do that. All right, thanks, Ray.
Cardielle, Cloud-
Yes.
Compton-
Yes.
Couch- Hussein- Tyler-
Yes.
Austin.
The variance is past seven zero?
Yes.
Now we need a motion for large scale.
Subject to all the staff comments as amended.
All-
I'm gonna say it one more time.
All of the staff comments.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't come and ask for a grading permit. Got it, guys?
Understood, yes.
Okay.
Thank, all right.
I will second that.
All right. Thanks, Dale. Thank you, Mark. All right.
Cloud-
Yes.
Compton-
Yes.
Couch- Hussein- Tyler-
Yes.
Austin-
Yes.
Cardielle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Preston, thanks for your attention to all of the issues that came your way.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, next on large scale, L twenty-three, thirty-four Sunrise Point Plaza, Highway four twelve and Candy Apple Street. And this is presented by Sunrise Point.
Okay, I gotta ask the questions before you start. Do we have the authorization form for Sunrise LLC? Okay, and, and, and George, you have authorization to represent Sun?
Yes, and the owner is here as well.
Okay, you can go then.
All right. Uh, we are doing a retail center here on this property. Um, we are asking for a few variances. One of the variances we're asking for is metal siding along the back. We are gonna be providing screening, um, and we are facing the back of the buildings, are facing the back of those homes as well. Um, we are asking for, uh, the commercial entrance, uh, which is required off every main street. We are asking for a variance from that one on building B. Um, there's really just not a lot of room there between the, uh, the access points, uh, that we have in order to be able to provide an entrance there. Um, and these are the buildings that they wanted to do. Um, there is a drive down the middle. The question for the drive was that it is a drive-up window. So for pharmacy, there will no be, not be any call boxes or anything along those sorts. So we are trying to, uh, meet the city standards in that respect. Um, but for the most part, yeah, this is just a few retail centers that he's wanted to add. Um, there are gonna be nine units on these buildings, one per every door on the back. So if you have any questions, um, owner is here. Um, I think we have some lovely elevations along the fronts and the sides, uh, if you guys wanna see those. And yeah, there is a lot of landscaping on these.
Do we have the elevations too?
No.
We're missing the elevations?
Apparently.
Can, can you explain again why nothing on the back?
Uh, metal siding on the back is we're gonna be using screening and, uh, obviously trying to keep costs down. But the, the back is, is going to be for, uh, mainly employee entrances for deliveries, uh, for keeping everything away from the back. Um, so in trade, we're, we're screening, adding some trees, adding, uh-
Extra?
You know, I, it looks like we have-
Minimum amount.
Well, if we have the minimum amount, we could add a few extras.
You could add a few extras, okay. There are residents to the north of this?
Yes, it's an entire subdivision. This is actually a lot in the subdivision. So those residences should have known that that was a commercial piece and it was always gonna be developed as a commercial piece. Besides knowing that it's on Highway four twelve or East Robinson Avenue, it's, it's kinda obvious that all that was gonna be developed commercially at some point.
I don't think there's a question that everybody knows is supposed to be commercial, but that doesn't mean the backside of the building can't look as good as the front. Just because it backs up to residential, you know. I don't see any additional screening on that side personally. Your call, guys.
Can you describe the metal that you were planning on using? Is it architectural? Is it?
So originally, uh, the architect had said it was gonna be architectural, but it ended up being, he just labeled it as metal siding. There is some architectural metal siding on the, uh, the front facades. Um, I wish we had a little bit of the elevations, but, um, so there is, uh, I believe some-
Can you get to the, can anybody get to the-
Elevations?
Elevations and-
I'm probably out there.
Wait, the, the planning commission has it in their packets. I mean, some of that architectural panel that's on the front couldn't be used on one of those panels in the back. I mean, you already got them coming to the site. Or maybe some of that, is that brick around the bottom? Could you put some brick around the bottom?
This is Amit Patel. He is the owner. So, um-
That's the only variance for commercial design standards you're asking for is to have that metal building on the back. You've got foundation landscaping every place you can do it. That's the only commercial design standard variance?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, well, yeah, the entrances, but, yeah, which-
Oh, sorry. You're correct. I, I take it back. I do have two.
Yeah. The other one is the entrance, the principal entrance off of the side street, yeah. And then the, the drive between the two buildings, so the building A will be the one that has a drive-through window?
Uh, drive-up window. I've been told that not to call it a drive-through window because it will not have a call box.
Okay. So, uh, nevermind, I'll leave that alone.
Well, the, uh, in the rendering that I'm looking at, it shows two different colors on the north side of the metal. There's a top color, so darker color, then there's a lighter color.
Top is the architectural siding from what I understand, that architectural metal siding, so with a look there.
What I'm looking at looks like, what I'm seeing on the rendering is also architectural and it shows to be vertical, architectural, grued, uh, metal. Is that what's gonna be back there?
Honestly, I, I, I sent in the, the renderings, um, do you remember? No, no, and on the- Are you talking on the front and the sides?
I'm talking about the back. The part that's facing the, the residential subdivision.
Well, you may be looking at the front of the, uh, what do you call it, that piece that extends up from the roof?
Well, that's the parapet that covers-
The parapet, thank you.
That covers, that covers the top of that. The rest of that is just the wall itself.
I'm happy to come down there and look at whatever you're looking at.
Yeah, if you want to. I guess my point is I'd be okay with what's here, but if this is not what you're gonna do, then I don't know if I'd be okay with it. No, that's fine. So I'm seeing architectural metal darker than lighter, if they're both the vertical nature.
Yeah, it's gonna be vertical nature. This is gonna be, this, believe that. So that is-
Sure.
And yes, that, uh, the architect actually did all the color scheme and everything.
So the materials that are on the drawings that the planning commission have will be the materials that are to be used. And you're confirming that? Okay. Now, wait a minute. You just said you confirmed it.
I confirm that that is exactly what we are drawing and the building plans submitted will have those materials on the building plans. So yes, I confirm that those are the materials. I thought you guys wanted me on the record. That's why I came up here on the microphone.
We, we, uh, expect you to do what you tell us you're gonna do, cause we're gonna check it.
Any comments at all from the audience? All right, let's take the variances. We have two. Do you wanna do those together? You all right with that? Okay. Uh, we would need a call for the vote on the two variances. Thank you.
Compton-
Yes.
Couch- Hussein- Tyler- Austin- Cardielle- Cloud.
Uh, I do drop off the site and I will be looking at the back of the building.
Well, this is the owner, so stare him in the eyes and tell him exactly what you want.
I will.
And he will, he will call me and say, did they do what the plans say? That's happened more than once already. Yeah.
I, I think I heard a yes from Cloud. I thought I did. Okay, good. Uh, we, we need a motion now for the large scale. That's twenty-three, thirty-four, uh, motion for large scale.
Motion, so-
All right. Thanks, Mark. Second? All right. Thank you.
Couch- Hussein- Tyler- Austin- Cardielle- Cloud-
Yes.
Compton.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda for large scale, this would be the M T N W A Dance Studio. This is on twenty-three, eighty-three Worth Lane. And we've got E S I presenting. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with E S I. Um, this is revision to a large scale previously approved. Um, previous project was not a dance studio. This project, um, we didn't have the lease figured out. My client didn't have the lease figured out, but they do now. The request is for this dance studio to be in this location. Um, and the reason I'm saying that, because the, the parking variance request, um, basically what we're trying to do is my client owns the whole property. Um, the dance studio is, is mainly just for training. Their hours operation are five to nine, typically after hours, off-peak hours from the other commercial, um, activities that are onsite. And so we feel like there's plenty of parking. Um, my client and the tenant, um, the tenant says they do not need parking at this location. Said it's a drop-off for training only. Um, however, they do have events two to three times a year at this location. Normally, all the kids train there and then on the weekends, they will go to other areas of the country for their tournaments or meets. But they will host, uh, occasionally two to three times a year at this location during the weekends only. Um, my client has also talked to the neighbor of the other development that's existing in this facility. Um, discussed the parking. Um, I think they're, they've reached understanding of what parking situation will look like. So, um, that's the reason for the parking variance. Um, and I'll try to answer any other questions.
I have a question before we get to staff comments.
Sure.
We combine this all into one lot, including this piece.
Yes, ma'am.
So basically they can use any parking spaces on this lot.
Yes.
So why are you asking for variance if all of the spaces are available for everybody to use?
Well, if, if we calculate all of the parking for the use for the three other buildings and the dance studio, in combination, I'm still lacking.
You're still fifty-three spaces short.
We're still short. Well-
No, fifty, yeah.
Twenty-five, twenty-five short, yes.
Now, this, this puts them in a position where you can't put something in there that would use more spaces than this.
No, I understand.
Your developer understands that too?
Yes. Absolutely.
What I'm saying is don't come back and ask to put a church in it or a restaurant in it or anything like that, cause you're not gonna have enough space. Got it?
Yeah. No, I agree. I, I mean, we're, you know, we're not, this location is not, I mean, I don't think it's a great location for a restaurant or, um, you know, th- those types of uses. Um, trades and services mainly. I mean, that's really what, what he's, he's, uh, trying to get in those facilities there. So, um, yeah, no, we understand the parking restrictions.
Are there any other staff comments?
Only comment staff or planning had was for the, um, variance for the reduction of parking.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. Any questions from the commission? You wanna deal with that variance first? And do large scale? Ready?
Call for the vote.
Need a call for the vote on that? Okay, Mark, for the variance?
Hussein- Tyler-
Yes.
Austin-
Yes.
Cardielle- Cloud-
Yes.
Compton-
Yes.
Couch.
That passes seven zero. Thank you. And now for large scale, I need a motion and a second.
A motion.
Mark, thank you.
Who did the second?
Brent. Brent, thank you, Brent.
Tyler-
Yes.
Austin-
Yes.
Cardielle-
Yes.
Cloud-
Yes.
Compton-
Yes.
Couch- Hussein.
That passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got more large scale. Um, twenty, twenty-three, forty is the Netzel Granite Shop. And this is on Pleasant and it's presented by Swope Engineering.
Hi, Phil Swope. This is just a flex office space use on Pleasant and Schmeting. Looking for your approval.
Any staff comments?
Planning only has standard comments for this. Engineering comments. I need more details on the underground detention system. Please show cross-sections, volume required versus volume provided, observation port location, orifice orientation, et cetera. Uh, my biggest question is where, um, the observation port will be in location to the dumpster, because the dumpster is shown on top of the underground detention system. Then the, the sidewalk on Pleasant Street needs to be a minimum of five feet wide with a minimum of four foot of green space. Um, and then we also need an addition, additional bit of right-of-way dedicated on Pleasant Street. I think, um, we're missing four feet that should be accounted for in the green space. We need the standard notes shown for streetlights. Please show a modified curb and concrete apron at the drive entrance on Schmeting according to Springdale Commercial Drive detail and include that detail in your plans. And show all ADA ramps and provide details.
Thank you. Any additional comments from staff?
I'm Erbil Frayley and I own the property just east. How much of a setback will there be?
I'm sorry?
From my building?
The setback from your building?
Yes.
Phil, can you answer that, please? The side setback-
From, from our building to your building?
Yes.
Oh, well, it's all the way across this parking lot, so, I mean, there's at least sixty feet there.
Oh, okay. All right.
Just to your property line?
It's just office space.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be warehouse and office.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, thanks. This would be a, any, any comments at all from the audience? This would be a motion, uh, subject to the staff comments. Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Mark.
Austin-
Yes.
Cardielle-
Yes.
Cloud-
Yes.
Compton-
Yes.
Couch- Hussein-
Yes.
Tyler-
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The last, um, issue that we have in large scale is the project Mayflower. This is a riv-. This is a revision, and it's on Kendrick Avenue in Old Wire. It's presented by ESI.
Thank you, Dr. Compton, Brandon Rush with ESI. Like you noted, the commission has seen this before. The summary of the changes is, it's the same building, it's turned slightly at an angle instead of being due north and south, um, trying to take advantage of the existing topography. Um, we went from two detention ponds to one larger detention pond and added some parking. And happy to answer any other questions.
Any staff comments?
Uh, staff has standard comments plus, uh, warranty deed is from twenty-fifteen, so when the, uh, informal plat, splitting this parcel away from the larger parcel is completed, they'll need to provide that newer warranty deed.
Engineering?
Please submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report. Provide a detail for the wheel stops in the parking lot. Um, and then we need a detail for the ADA ramps.
Are there any comments from the audience? This would be a motion, uh, on the Project Mayflower that, uh, would be subject to the staff comments. Thanks, Dale. Thanks, Ray.
Cardiel? Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler? Austin?
That's all that we have for large scale. We now move on to item ten, which is the Board of Adjustment. These are all variances, and these will all be on a call for the vote. And we've covered a couple of them already. Uh, we're down to B twenty-three sixty-three, which is Mario Chavez, uh, the artist barber shop on ten-ten South Pleasant. Um, asking for a variance on the paving requirement and, uh, presented by Mario Chavez. Mario Chavez? We'll come back to that. If we could. Let's go to the next one. This is B twenty-three sixty-four, Shiloh Christian School on Johnson. Uh, this is a variance for the wall size, uh, of, uh, the wall sign size from thirty-two to seventy, almost seventy-four feet, uh, presented by Keith McDaniel. Keith?
Hey, how you guys doing? Yeah, so we're just, uh, putting on a school sign. I think we have one more image to kinda show what it looks like. Next one down. And there you go. And so that's what it is. Um, so just wanted to fill up that space, um, above that arched entrance there, and that's what we're looking for. Any questions, happy to answer.
Is this your east entrance?
This would be the east, yes, sir.
Thanks, Mark. Any, any, before we do that, any questions or comments from the audience at all on the sign? All right, thank you. All right. Call for the vote?
Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler? Austin? Cardiel?
That passes seven-zero. The next variance request comes from Alberto Gonzalez Tenor, Tenorio and Laura Hernandez, um, from Old Wire, and this is a variance on paving. Presented by Laura Hernandez, Laura?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Do you wanna tell us about your project?
Yeah, um, my husband and I, we decided to put gravel in the front of our house, 'cause we noted, we just brought the house in October, and we noticed the water from the road came all the way through the house. So that makes, like, all cars, we can move the cars, so it's tuck of the mud. So also, the waters go inside, almost inside of the house, in the front door. So that's why we put the gravel in the front.
Has there been, anybody been out there to look at it? And do you have any measurements on how wide this is? Does it come all the way up to the edge of the house on the front?
No, ma'am. We just put the gravel just where we saw the water and all the mud. So that's why we decided to put all the way around.
Katie, have you, have you looked at this?
So I believe code enforcement left them a letter, and so they came in to get a driveway permit. Um, and that's when we said, I'm not sure that we can approve this without any variances. So I think what they are hoping to do is keep the gravel, and they have like a horseshoe, right? Horseshoe drive, so you can pull all the way through. And then, you know, what it sounded like is since they were, had some low spots in the yard, they basically did grading, you know, with the gravel to keep the, to, you know, get rid of those low spots. So when they came in for the driveway permit, we said we couldn't approve it without a variance, and because they would like to keep the gravel and not have to pave it.
Is there gonna be grading as part of this solution, Katie?
I believe they would like to keep it as-is. That's what they're asking for.
Well, i- is one of the pictures we're looking at here, is it what was there before? Where were this grass and then you paved on top of, put gravel on top of everything in the front?
Okay, so there was a pre-existing gravel driveway that was like a horseshoe through the property, and they added more gravel.
Okay. So we really don't have any dimensions or anything other than, yeah. A- and, and so you're saying the area around those trees all the way up to the house, there was water getting into that from the existing driveway?
All the water from the, goes all the way to my house.
We can't hear you unless you step up to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, oh, okay, we can park around, uh, where the grass was, 'cause the mailbox, mailbox car came in from there. So sometimes, we don't let him put, you know, letters in there, so we decide to put the gravel on the sides to park over there. We don't have a garage.
So basically, they, they created parking spaces out of that gravel as well.
So, and we calculated that all of this is gonna be the more than forty percent in the front of the yard, in the front of the house? 'Cause it looks like it's more than forty percent.
It probably is, and, and to be honest, we didn't get that far in the application process, because they wanted to keep it gravel, and we told them, you know, we couldn't approve anything in gravel without a variance. Um, and they indicated that they did not want to pave it, so we didn't quite get that far, um, to check whether it was over forty percent.
Okay, so if, if we, if we deny the variance for the, the gravel the way I have it on now, they could come back and work with you guys and figure out how to get something in there that works a little bit better that doesn't have forty percent? Or they need to get an engineer to, to look at it for them?
Was denied, they would need to either remove the extra gravel that they placed, or they would need to pave, is what I understand.
But that's paving more than when?
Up to forty percent.
Yeah. So we would, they really need to get somebody to go out there and help them figure out how to get the circle drive paved and
And some parking spaces.
More than forty percent. They really need somebody to help them do that.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah. But if you, if you grant the variance, then it stays like that, that's not something we've done very many other times. Did you take the trees out?
Some of them. Yeah.
Well, it looks like there was two trees in front of the house, and now there's no trees in front of the house?
Uh, when we brought the house, it was like that cutter, like that, exactly like that. So the other side, the ones on the side from the old neighbors, we cut it. 'Cause it was, there's, uh, electrici- electricity cables. So we decided to remove it, just for precautions, precautions.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda what I was looking at, is they could, yeah. 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 I, I think we're gonna have to go back to something that's closer to what was there to start with and create some parking spaces up close to the house, but not the entire frontage of the house, because it's more than forty percent. A- and it may be that we want to request that they go get someone to do a drawing with some dimensions and calculation of the forty percent before we, we move forward with this too.
If, if we deny this, how long is it before they can bring it back? The variance?
A year.
Year? If you table it, they can bring it back. So I think what we're trying to tell you is maybe table it, get some more information, get some more information, provide us, so we can help you get what you need and also work for you long-term. Is that what you wanna do? You wanna table it and then get with the engineering and get this figured out?
Basically, if they table it tonight, um, then we can work with you to get some more information on it, and then it would automatically go back on the agenda next month, on July tenth. So then you would have to come back next month. Is that what you wanna do?
Do you want to have the money to do something else at the moment? I have too many issues with the problem.
So if you table it tonight, we can work on it for the next month, and then you get another chance, basically.
Table? Would you like to table it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll try to help you.
Thank you.
That item is tabled. We're on to B twenty-three sixty-six. This is David Quinn in Pine Woods. Um, trying to get a variance reduction from thirty-five to twenty, presented by David Quinn.
Yes, uh, my name is David Quinn. Uh, if you do have questions, my hearing is shot. Uh, so I may not hear you. What I have presented, as you can see, that shed has been there for quite some time. I am asking for a variance, because you should have also a survey that was done there. And I'm asking for a variance, because I wanna tear that shed down and replace it with a steel prefab shed, twenty by twenty-four. And basically, on the same footprint. Now, the twenty by twenty-four shed is a little bigger, because the man who initially built that shed, he didn't worry about things. I'm sorry, that's Oh, okay. My wife corrects me. So I'm asking for a variance on that. And if you have any questions, I know some of you have already been out there and looked at it. And also, I know the neighbors will be jumping for joy when I tear it down.
Do you know the planned height of the new structure?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the height of the new planned structure?
It's gonna be, it's about, the, the height is gonna be about the same height as this is now. Yeah, again, remember please that the man who built this thirteen-foot. The man who built this did not really care about anything, because it was all concrete.
Is there a reason why you're going back to the same location?
I, I'm sorry, sir.
Is there a reason why you're going back to the same location and not setting it separate, differently, so it'll meet the ordinance?
It's a good place for it, sir. It's a good place, and then also because of the footprint of the existing building, uh, I'm planning on pouring a four-inch slab there, twenty by twenty-four foot, with reinforced on it. The steps getting up into it are a little challenging for both of us now. You know, when you're young, you can just jump over anything. But, uh, it, sir, it was just, it's a good place for it, and it's using the existing footprint.
Any questions at all, or any comments from the audience? To the commission, this would be a call for the vote, or any questions you might have? Thank you. Howard?
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler? Austin? Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
That passes seven-zero.
You need to get a building permit.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
B twenty-three sixty-seven, variance requested by Richard Rushing on Remson Lane. Uh, this is for a variance, uh, expansion of the driveway, uh, kind of towards the primary entrance, and it's presented by Pamela Waters. Pamela?
Okay. Um, we built a extra garage when, um, I think we started construction like in October that was permitted and all that. And, um, now we need to be able to access it with a driveway. And we had to build it on the left of the house, which is the opposite side of the garage, um, because all the utilities are over in the others, but on the other side, and with all the setbacks and all that, it really only fit where we put it.
Does this exceed the forty percent of the front being paved? No?
I don't think so.
Okay. I don't calculate angles very often.
Katie?
So they came in for a driveway permit and they meet all of our, um, rules. It's just that it goes on the front door side of the house, because we couldn't get it to fit on the other side.
Any other staff comments? No? Thanks, Katie. Any comments from the audience? This would be a call for the vote, uh, to the commission? Thanks, Mark. Or not? Oh, is it Ray? Sorry. My bad, Ray.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler? Austin? Cardiel? Cloud? Compton?
Yes. That passes seven-zero. Uh, we are down to B twenty-three, uh, seventy. This is, uh, requested by Daniel Beza, Maria Valente, um, on Radell Avenue. It's a, a reduction from the front, sent back thirty to fifteen feet, presented by Kevin Beza.
Hello, good afternoon. Uh, we're just asking permission to build, it's basically a carport. It's twenty-three feet long, thirteen feet wide, and eight feet tall. We had a, we had like a tent there, but we were planning on moving, so we're staying there, so we're trying to build like a portable, not a portable, something stable.
So if you, if you build it out, do you have room to park a vehicle and not block the driveway?
Yeah, it's basically, it's, it's just gonna be the cover of the cars we have there. So it's gonna be like in the parking spot. It's gonna be connected to the garage.
Actually connected to the garage? And do you park in the garage?
Yeah, we park in the garages. We have four cars, and with the hell, it's, it's a new car, and like the hailstorms have been coming in a lot. It messes up the cars a lot, so we're just trying to protect the car a little bit.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, this would be a call for the vote, or questions or comments? Thanks, Brent.
Hussein? Tyler? Austin? Cardiel? Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
This takes us down to B twenty-three seventy-three. This is a variance request from Scooters Coffee on North Thompson. And again, this is a reduction in minimum distance from the drive to an intersection, presented by Andrew Turner.
Uh, Andrew Turner, Scooters Coffee, just wanna use the current ingress egress to the property.
And that, is that a right-in, right-out?
It is a right-in, right-out on that drawing. Uh, RDOT denied that, so we just need to have a, to use the existing one that's there.
Okay, I'm confused. The drawing that we see here
So that, that drawing is not actually the correct drawing now. You have to go back to the original drawing that we have with the right-in, right-out. That is not a right-in, right-out anymore. That is just a, we have the drawing as an ingress egress, where you can get in and get out.
I just have a quick question. Did RDOT not approve the right-in, right-out, or is it just that they requested a DR-one drive? Okay, DOT will not allow right-in, right-out configurations on state highways.
At the location that you're proposing here, do you wanna use the existing driveway that's on the site now? Highway Department approve that?
Yeah, there is no notes on that.
So looking at this aerial where the existing driveway is off of Thompson, you propose to move it further to the south? But now you want to, I'm confused. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I understand what we're talking about.
We just want to use the current one that is there on the drawing.
As a right-in, right-out? Can't do that. I tell you, it's gonna be hard to get in and out at that location whether you use the existing one or the, or a new one because it's, traffic there is terrible, so. Engineering have a recommendation on that? Yeah, me too. I didn't realize what we were asking for. That makes it closer to the intersection than what it is, what they proposed to do?
I believe so.
Yeah? It used to be the, the car dealership that was there, yeah? And I, you know, I don't know that it got used a lot when it was the car lot.
Can we move the entrance this way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's...
Do we need to have some conversations with the highway department before we do something with this?
Well, I have, they must be this one because the highway department would be telling them no here. This is...
I mean, our comments before is you had to have approval from the highway department and the highway department turned down what, what you proposed. Do you mind tabling this and give us a chance to talk to the highway department about this? Does that create a problem for you?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be our hope to use the property to the south as well because the property owner owns both lots. And we would work with him as well.
So were you talking about doing a shared access off that second one that's down there on the lot to the south at 4428?
In time, yes. Like as in next year when the lease is up on that property.
In time when, I'm sorry?
When, when the lease is up on the southern property. The landlord, the person leasing the property to the south does not want us to use his lot right now.
I, I would suggest that we table this and give us a little bit of time to work on this and see if we can figure something out before we grant a variance. But that would be my recommendation, but that, it's your call.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, let, let us do that. We'll try to help and make some progress on it, okay?
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
So we own the lot just below them and on, I'm sorry, Karen McPherson. We own the lot that is just below the PSI. And the lot that he's talking about, that driveway, has never been used in that fashion. And our concern is that if we create a drive-through going south, using that south entrance there, that we will create a cross-through or a thoroughfare through our property. And we're just asking that there be some kind of a barrier so that they cannot cross all the way down into 4388. And he is correct, the gentleman that owns this corner lot also owns the 210183 and he also owns 21181 on wagon wheel. So he owns that entire corner. And so I don't know how you manage this, but we have not granted a thoroughfare. And in the past, this has been used as a parking lot. And so we're just concerned about through traffic for our renters in that area.
Let us, we table it, let us sit down and look at all those issues and we can...
Thank you very much.
Talk about all that together.
We'll address that. Thank you. Move into the waiver section, section 11 on the agenda. These are motions that we need and whatever we decide will go on to city council with our recommendation that we've approved it or we've denied it. The first one up is W 23-16, Ryan and Sarah McLean on wagon wheel. And they want to waive the sidewalk requirement. And this is presented by Ryan and Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan McLean. 213 B Carrington in Lowell currently, but trying to get here. We've got a, a stretch on wagon wheel and the topography right along wagon wheel in this stretch. I guess it's on the order of about 100 feet or so. It's really steep. It climbs up very quickly. Probably about a 40-foot rise within about 40-foot off the center right-of-way there. Maybe, maybe, maybe more than that, but it's, I think it's a 70-foot right-of-way and sidewalk. I was just talking to James Gerkes, our civil engineer, and he was giving me the lowdown on that and he said that's a, that's a lot of earth to cut. So anyways, that's kind of the hardship we're, we're kind of asking council to, to consider. The property just to the east of his, Carla Berg was approved for the same waiver last year and she had to deal with the same thing and I can understand why.
And you're just building a single-family house there?
Yeah, yeah, actually, so that's, we approached for a tandem lot, tandem lot split to sell the back three acres. There's been some complications to that because of utilities, for the same reasons, actually. There's, city water is like buried around two and a half, three foot deep. But because they did that at the distance away from the road, it's up the hill also. So two and a half feet deep, you know, three foot deep for water main burial to get a driveway tie-in still has that pipe coming right through your windshield, you know, as you kind of go in, so. So all those complications are being worked out and looked at and we're, we're daylighting that pipe and kind of validating that stuff. And so we wanted it, but you can't really trust that. So we want to make sure, been working with Rick Pulverini and Mike Imms and all that stuff and so. But at most, we would be selling one three-acre lot. That was a tandem lot split approved last year, so, but it'd be two...
You're really asking just for the waiver for the single-family house that you're building?
Yeah, for that we're building, yeah.
I don't normally recommend waivers for sidewalks, but this one's kind of, this one's kind of unique.
Yeah, there's not much out there.
And someday if we do wagon wheel, we should take care of all that.
I agree. This would be a motion and we'd forward that on to city council. Thanks, Ray. Need a second? Second, Brent, good.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Steph will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the 27th.
Two more items under our waivers. One is 2318, the hideaway. It's on Price Avenue. This would be regarding the street improvements on Price and it's presented by ESI.
Actually, it's presented by Zach Brothers. I'm one of the developers. So we just wanted to talk about this for a minute. You know, as, as downtown's revitalizing, there'll certainly be areas that are more conducive to doing lots of paved surfaces and sidewalks. We're trying to work on a development in a neighborhood that's just to the west of us and, and we're working with the land, trying to preserve the green space. We've got a couple of trees there and some green space that we really want to preserve for the, as you can see on the, the bottom portion of this drawing, those, there, there are two houses facing each other and we're trying to preserve green space just to the south of those so that the tenants will be able to enjoy a little bit of extra yard there. We'd like to circle up some Adirondack chairs in that area and if we have to push the, the roadway to the north, it'll just eat away at the green space there. So really trying to work with the land in that area. That area, it, it, we're calling it the hideaway. We want it to be kind of hidden back in there. And if, if we had to add pavement and curb to that area, it would look different than the rest of that area back there as well. So we just, we want to preserve the look and work with the land there.
This will be our first cottages under the Form Based Code project that we, we've been working on it for weeks.
Yeah.
Months, actually, months. But it's a horizontal, it's a horizontal property regime. It's not dividing it into separate lots, yeah.
Thanks for correcting that.
Thank you, Sarah. Engineering, do you have some comments, Katie?
He was close. Just wanted to note that just to the west of this property, we did have a single-family home be built recently and they did build their sidewalk on the north side of Price Avenue. So there would be a sidewalk to connect to it. And I feel with this type of infill development, sidewalks are really important for walkability in downtown. So I, I could see not wanting to include curb and gutter and those types of things, but I feel like sidewalk would be very important for this development.
Can you put a sidewalk there, Zach?
Our current plan doesn't call for a, for a sidewalk right there because we're concerned about what would happen as it encroached on the two trees that are there. We're concerned about what would happen as people are dragging their, their dumpsters through and having to go up over a sidewalk there. The, the, the plan that we have here doesn't add any paved surfaces. It uses, it uses some decorative gravel and, and the sidewalks will be chat. So if we tried to connect to an existing concrete sidewalk, I'm not sure what that would do. And if we look further to the east and across the street in this whole area, there aren't, there aren't a lot of sidewalks through there.
Would you be open to a creative solution with a, maybe not sidewalk, but a designated walking path that coordinates with what you're trying to do, but also does what Katie's and the rest of us want, which is a walkable downtown where people understand that they can walk, like they don't have to live there to walk past there. Is there something we can maybe coordinate and do something where we get them?
Absolutely, yeah. We, we, we're trying to promote walkability and the way we're promoting it out of our development is actually going to the north and going down the existing sidewalk along Huntsville. There are, we do have these several sidewalks that go throughout the, the development there. Like I said, we were just trying to preserve the, the green space there along Price Avenue.
Could you do that same kind of walking surface along the streets was more of that asking? Not a paved sidewalk along the street, but do the same kind of, so there is a walking surface across through there along Price Street on the north side? If you go to the mic.
I'll go ahead and bring that mic down for you.
So on that sidewalk, would it have to be like just a straight, big, thick sidewalk? Or if we're gonna make it kind of cool, I don't know if any of you guys have been like to Black Apple in Bentonville or the new Johnson subdivision that's going in where they're doing the Johnson Square there. They've got walkway sidewalks that kind of meander and it's got that chat surface and everything like that. Could we do something like that or is it gonna have to be a straight sidewalk? In other words, to kind of move around the trees and make it pretty?
Yeah, to me, I mean personally, my thought is as long as people understand that's a walking path.
Yeah, the only thing we run into is sidewalk on private property where if it would get out of the right-of-way of Price Avenue, we would want a pedestrian access easement to be platted on top of it if it got out of the existing right-of-way.
Can you do that for us with a pedestrian access across there with that sidewalk being in that?
But yeah, but I think we want it to be concrete since it's a public...
Because we don't have a way to maintain it.
Mm-hmm. If it's a public sidewalk.
If it's a public sidewalk.
We need to maintain.
So it has to be a pong, I'm sorry. So it... It would have to be a concrete sidewalk, but we could make it meander around the trees?
We have something go around trees and signs all over town.
Make it pretty, so it's not just some ugly straight sidewalk that's floating there to nothing. Because right now, that's what it's gonna be. I know the one house to the north.
Now, I tell you the same things here I tell everybody else. We build them where we've got them, we can put them in there and someday all these are gonna collect, connect together.
I hope you're right. I've lived downtown for six and a half years now and we're waiting, we're hoping that...
Well, now, six and a half years in city time is not too long. Just remember, it takes us a long time to get things done.
That's true.
It's only a year.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I'm okay with that, but he's the man that's...
It's, it's okay, though, if we, I mean, if we, if we do this concrete sidewalk, though, if, if we can route it around, like around the trees and, and the sign and the, the mailbox that we have planned for that area.
Put that on your plan and let's look at it and see if we can figure that out.
Yeah, we appreciate it. It, we've been working on this.
Listen, let's work on it a little bit more.
Okay.
Now you know which direction we're going?
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for working with it. We've been working on it for a long time. We're trying to make it really cool.
We're gonna get there, guys. We're gonna get there.
All right. Tabled, all right. 2319 is Seven Brew on Robinson. And this is a request for waiver of the sidewalk requirements by Bates and Associates.
Hi, my name is Jake Chavis from Bates and Associates. So this project is currently under construction. I think most of the sidewalk is already in. We are requesting fee and lieu for the last five feet of sidewalk on the east side. There are just a bunch of utility conflicts that we ran into. There's a power pole there and some communication lines and then also a, a storm flared in section there. So we're just requesting fee and lieu for the last five feet. Sidewalks don't, don't connect to anything on either side.
That excuse doesn't work, remember?
Sorry?
That excuse doesn't work that it doesn't connect anything. Engineering have a problem with the payment and lieu? Okay.
Any questions at all from the public that's here? No? All right. This comes to the commission for a motion one way or the other and go on to city council.
They're asking for payment and lieu of?
Payment and lieu, I'm sorry.
So motion, payment and lieu of, recommend to the council.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Dale, thank you.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Last section on the agenda is titled "Other." There are, there are a few of these that are basically just extensions of projects that have already been approved. The, the first one might require a little bit of conversation. Patsy, do you want to talk about GPS transportation just a little bit?
In 2021, a conditional use was granted for this location for a use unit 35 transportation services in a C5 zoning district. The conditions that were allowed, that were added to this conditional use was that the, a large-scale development plan is needed for the entire track and parking of all vehicles on paved surfaces only. I believe code enforcement had talked to them about they were parking vehicles in the grass. They've extended gravel, they're parking on the gravel in, in conflict with this conditional use and we have not seen a large-scale development plan. I am asking that we set a public hearing on this conditional use to come back in July and review the conditions of this conditional use and determine whether it needs to be changed and/or denied at that point. Give us the developer or the owner a month to kind of get his act together and come forward with whatever he plans to do with it. That's what I'd like to do. So I'm asking that we set a public hearing on the conditional use for GPS transportation, which is a use unit 35 in a C5 zone.
Okay.
We don't do this very often, but we do have the capability when we have concerns to bring them back in and y'all set a hearing and then we talk about them.
So our motion, our motion would be to set a public hearing?
Right.
On GPS transportation and continue to talk about their, their use.
And it'll be the July meeting and we'll talk just a few minutes about the date of that meeting.
Okay, all right. We need a motion to that effect?
So motion?
All right. Thanks, Mark. Thanks.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Cardiel?
Okay, so the property owner will be notified that we will have a review and all the adjacent property owners will be notified at the same time so that we can review that. I suggest you come to the meeting, prepare to discuss what you're willing to do, what, so we can review the whole conditional use again, okay?
The other parts of the agenda, we have five different extensions. Patsy, do each one of those need to be handled individually?
Well, if you make a motion to approve all of those extensions at one time, we don't have to do them separately. We have Big MO which was approved last year and L22. We have the Single Parent Scholarship Fund in, in '22 and we have the preliminary plat for, and these are probably in various states of moving forward. They just don't meet the requirements that, that has to be done in a year, so we just need to grant them a one-year extension.
And then we had two others that came in.
Yeah.
One was Bridgers Crossing, and the other one was Oceanfront Estates. Perhaps we could do a package with an extension of all of those at one time, if, if that is something that.
Unless somebody wants to say something different about one of them not being extended. Anybody have a problem with any of those being extended?
Just want to make sure that the owner's aware that with an extension of a large scale, then we, we're gonna go, we've had a new code. So they'll have to go to the new code. I looked at both of these. They're both wood frame structures. I don't think there's gonna be any major changes.
Thanks, Ed.
Anybody have any issues with any of these?
I guess as the progenitor of most of these, I would.
What did you call yourself?
Progenator. I've never heard that word before. It's gotta be an engineering term, guys. That's what it's gotta be.
Fifty cent word. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say that extending this period to eighteen months would negate the need to do this. Just for your consideration.
Pressing your luck, ordinance automatically allows you to do, they can do it for a year. You want to ask for eighteen months on some of these?
I mean, to be honest, with, like, we have been working on most of these. There's not been much on the single parent one, but we've been working on them continuously since approval. And there's just something on every one that has drug it out. And it's not start, the condition is not to start, it's to have footings dug on these buildings. So if it's a large project or a complex project, a year goes by really fast. It's just what I would throw out there.
Okay, if we can't do them all together with, with a year, you gotta go back here one at a time. David, do you need eighteen months, too?
Well, it's something to consider, Mrs. Christie, because our, in our case with Hawksby Subdivision, no, we don't need eighteen months here, but with supply chain issues and permitting processes, it took us over six months from the time the preliminary plat was approved to get the last, well, not even the last approval, the next-to-last approval on this. So your current requirements with preliminary plats are, you have to have the preliminary plat approved before you submit engineering drawings to engineering, and that does take some time. So we'd appreciate your consideration of that extension. Thank you.
So I would just make the comment, I'm, I'm happy getting an extension, one year, with all these together. I'm hesitant to give eighteen months simply because I know construction works off of deadlines. When you extend things out, it, people just take longer to do it. So that's my thought on that.
I would suggest if you think that's really important, get with one of your council members and see if you can get them to make a change to the subdivision regulations or the, because that's where it's set up at. Your choice.
All right, we, we've got a motion for taking them all at once for one year on the, on the extension. Mark made that motion. All right, good. Thank you.
Second? Howard?
Howard.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler? Austin? Cordial? Cloud?
Thank you. That takes us to the last item on the agenda, which is a couple items. One is when, what would we meet in July? And then, Patsy, if you have any comments.
Well, I, I can tell you the good news is, or the bad news, depending on your point of view, is that we're supposed to be moving back into this building by the end of the month. Assuming the furniture gets delivered. So what, what we have discussed is moving the July planning commission meeting to Monday, July the tenth. And we will be in this room again because the new council chamber is not gonna be ready for a while. And with that being the case, the planning office will close on Friday, June the thirtieth, and reopen again on Monday, July the tenth to give us a chance to get everything moved, the computers up, and kind of know what we're doing in the new, and hopefully the computers will all work in that timeframe. And that's, that's my recommendation, but I would like a motion to approve rescheduling the July planning commission meeting from the fifth to the tenth.
All right, thank you, Dale. We need a second on that motion? All right, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. We'd meet on Monday at five o'clock on July tenth for our regular meeting. Also, that month, there would be no.
No work session that month.
No work session that month in July.
There would be no work session in July, and that means the deadlines for submission will not change. The planning commission will still have the same, all that. What it does is gives us a chance, if the computers are down, the week of the thirtieth gives us till the next week to get your packet out to you. If by some chance it's done by the thirtieth, well, you'll get in an extra, an extra week. Moving all this stuff is really gonna be kind of, hopefully it goes well. We're all very optimistic, or nervous, or whatever term you want to use. I don't know that we're all convinced it's gonna happen, but I can tell y'all we're ready to move into the new building and get settled and move on with that, so.
We've got a motion. We've got a motion and a second. We just need a vote.
Okay. Austin? Cordial? Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Couch? Hussein? Tyler?
Yes.
Bingo.
Thank you.
And with that, that's the only thing I have to report tonight.
All right.
We're, we're really busy, but it appears that the July agenda is not quite as extensive as some of the others, so.
That's all the business that we have. Thanks to the commissioners for a good meeting. Thanks to all the staff members who come and all your comments. It's really valuable. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.